... meeting to order with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the power of our holy saints, one God, universal, the great and powerful our Lord. I'll need you.
So, just under additions, I know we have to discuss the zoning administrators' office in general, but Deb asked that we touch upon their office needs specifically the computer. So, we can discuss that whenever it's appropriate. And then Deb, Mojer Duquette submitted some feedback on the movement of the monument that's been discussed. So, we can bring that up maybe under old business. And no additions. The only item is under old business. We were slated to discuss the wording of the considered by our well-proposed monument wording. So, that's something that we could still address and I could just let them know whether or not you're okay with that wording.
Introduce to those presenters. Everyone signed in? Previous minutes. How does everybody feel about them?
There were just two spelling corrections on the attendance list. It's Ray is a senior, not a junior, and Angela Miller, not Mills, which was my personal interpretation. But, exciting.
Anybody see anything that came up? Somebody want to make a motion on them or anybody have anything to discuss?
I'm going to accept the minutes with the two spelling corrections.
Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Katrina Tyler?
Um, I don't know if this town people do because I know the brain issue and the thought has been addressed previously. But I'm just here to reiterate that since the pain and loss of degrees, there has been runoff from the filling in the building that I own at 13th Avenue. From unprecedented amount of water and washing out the burbery and filling the basement. And it's because of the road level based on because the water doesn't run along the surface anymore. And though there are others who are taller, which is hoping to see this, I think we want to also really agree with that problem.
In the same location?
No, at their home further up.
Further up, okay. Okay.
Were you here when we brought it up at the meeting two weeks ago?
I wasn't.
What?
I was not here. I heard that it's up there.
Well, our highway foreman is addressing the issue.
Is anything that'd be done to the first deal or?
I have no idea.
We haven't got his feedback. We expect he'll be here tonight. And he was asked to evaluate the situation. I see that they did work a little bit on the drain across the road, but...
Yeah, that drain wasn't really affect what comes into the money.
That's correct. So, they have been in the area is all I'm saying.
Okay, great.
He is aware of it and I think he said that last year he ended up putting some sand back there to help.
Yes, we put some sand back.
They were sandbags installed, okay, so they were installed by you to...
I was, they're not really doing...
They're not doing what they need to do.
What they need to do, yeah, definitely. That's very measured.
We're waiting for feedback from him and hopefully, usually he comes in a little bit when we get down. If it's recorded, you sit here by seven thirty.
Yeah, I remember being in there hearing, I was told that I should get on the agenda.
Well, that's good. So, we will be quizzing him about what his opinion is when he gets here.
Okay, great, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Frank?
There are a number of positions here, side lines below the road now. That would be three, the lower line and the side line.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Zoning administrators' report. Let's start right here with...
So, there is a, you have in your piles an interim zoning administrators' report.
So, I guess we gotta make him an interim zoning administrator.
Yes.
Probably be the first course of action. That's how the board feel about that. So, obviously, he did decide that he would accept the position on an interim basis until we could find someone new. So, does the board have any questions or comments? Jonas Rosenthal will do the zoning administrator. You have any interim, so we can hire a full-time replacement. He's not interested in taking over as a full-time position.
Not currently.
Not currently. We softened him up a little bit, but he has...
So, I'm getting all the...
But he has come down and started to work through some of the backlogs that we have.
It's been your wife's family coming back from...
It's not there.
No, Jonas Rosenthal.
Right.
Jonas Rosenthal?
He's a well.
Good, okay. That's good, thank you.
He was, he was...
He was Polkney Vermont's town manager for nearly years.
Thirty-one years and also the zoning administrator. That's...
Yeah, he's come in and shared habits for a while and still been in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's in town.
He has a new position, yeah. That's good.
That was about, fortunately, put interest in and no one else has even expressed any interest of, you know, have you guys heard of anybody that was... So, do we wanna make it official that Jonas is our interim zoning administrator? Somebody to make that into form of a motion or...
I would make that motion. So, if Jonas says the interim...
We hire...
Interim, yeah. That'll be on there.
To hire Jonas Rosenthal as the interim...
Zoning administrator.
Somebody want to second that motion? Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Bradley? Okay.
From Mike, just I did have a couple of announcements.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait until after?
No, we'll write it down.
Okay. So, the first announcement applies to everybody sitting in the sign shares. The way that they have been staffed at the end of the meeting is not the superior stacking method. There is a new stacking method, which as the fine women come in the mornings after our meetings and they find fallen chairs. We don't want that. So, there is a photo at the back of the room, which lets you know how to stack the chairs. If we can all work together, I was like, hey, we should put up a photo and Deb had already done it. So, she was like, so good, thank you Deb. So, please be mindful of how you're stacking your chairs. My next announcement is there have been some elongated meetings recently in part due to discussions had that don't specifically pertain to the select board. So, I found in the select board's handbook, some of the responsibilities of the select board. This is going to be printed out and available for public review in the public review area. And I will be sure to bring this up if and when these situations do arise, just to make sure that these gentlemen who only get to meet every other week for two hours have a productive and effective use of their time. And the last announcement is that there was a letter that came to the board from the Young at Heart Senior Center in Polkney asking for a donation of something that we could maybe factor into a future budget as they are experiencing a shortage of funds to provide meals to their seniors. So, we can discuss that, but I just wanted to. And that's that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Zoning permit issued. John Stedman, horse barn and storage, and that was a pending application. And Jana Mason, a greenhouse, and that was a pending application. We met with David and William Young in their survey regarding a subdivision boundary line, lot adjustment issue. We turned calls from August and September, spoke with applicants for new permits yet to be filed, reading the zoning ordinances to presumably assign themselves with the regulations, finding old files for pending notices, a violation left message for the new town attorney regarding those cases. Need to read the files to summarize myself for the past practices. Discovered the previous zoning administration used a laptop for zoning, town zoning business and correspondence. Chief will contact housewife to recover those files. The computer in the zoning administrator's office has not been used for quite some time. Software is very out of date and the town needs a new computer to conduct business in-house and on-site. He has scheduled hours in the town office from nine-thirty to one-thirty on Wednesdays. Get appointed, well, that doesn't matter anymore. And so, he cannot make tonight's meeting. He has the planning commission meeting in Castleton. Jonas Rosenthal. So, I guess now we're onto the computers issue. Carrie?
Yeah.
Do we have an idea on how much a computer would cost? Do you have any correspondence? There was some from Deb on it.
What I know is that Jonas needs a computer and John Fried, who's our IT connection, recommends one of the two below with some stipulations. And he would also come in to set up when the time comes. Windows ten Pro desk machine. First is like six fifty and then nine ninety-nine. It's all that I have. So, one is about six hundred and fifty dollars. There's another one for around a thousand dollars, which has more horsepower for more money, but is better, is what I've gathered from John. So, either will work, he says, but more power ultimately is better.
Frank?
He's probably not gonna need a little staff, I'd probably assume. What, the clerk, are you happy with yours?
Yes.
And how much is yours?
Um, between seven and eight, seven fifty and eight fifty, I believe, when all is said and done.
My suggestion is, thank you, you have the computer, you have the thing, the other part is, you know, you need the best.
Yeah, I know that the suggestion in this email said desktop computer, but I don't know if, I mean, if he plans to do any work outside of the offices. Laptops are convenient, but...
I don't know. I presume that he's... That question should be asked of him before we... Do you know if he has any desire to have a laptop or a desktop or it doesn't matter or...
Yeah, it doesn't surprise me, one of the...
What wound up happening with this computer was that we, I worked with Julie to determine what best fit in the budget and then we kinda went from there.
Okay.
That was...
Frank?
And yours? Do it by the monitor, keyboard?
Yes, that's beautiful, yes.
Using the desktop and if they push on the button, it can go someplace with the computer. Then you can get a laptop and you got it to go.
Yes, but it boils down to is how much money is in the...
I have no, I don't know.
Julie, Julie or how? Got my letter right here. Okay, okay. So, I would say that we should just check in with Julie and make sure about... I'm thinking that we need a computer and if he wants a desktop, if he feels that's gonna be most suitable for him. We kinda let him kinda go, wouldn't you think, Harry, whatever?
Well, he is interim, so...
Right.
What's more secure for us? Are they better to have a desktop and stay there all the time?
And actually, what the, how much field work is, do you really do on your computer anyway?
I mean, I only do because I don't have an office here, you know, so... I mean, I think a desktop is sufficient.
I would think it's...
Anything he wants to take with him, he should take with him. Working on at home.
Right. Now, with the service around here, it wouldn't be how necessarily all that handy to have one. We were trying to get, anyway, so why don't we, you need to make a motion, you know?
This thing says the town needs a new computer to conduct business in-house and on-site. So, if he's talking about conducting business on-site, he is talking about a laptop, right? I guess the problem where he is, prior to...
Paul.
The service at most, at this town, unless you're on the west side, you don't have service.
And for having service, Frank would be here.
Service here.
Frank, somebody wanna make a motion that we give him, let him buy one of the computers? I mean, for a thousand dollars for a computer to do the business, he needs a really very low investment.
And he'll be able to do, I mean, a desktop or a laptop, whatever is more suitable for the position is going to be within the budget, so an authorization for computer purchase is probably...
For a thousand bucks, yeah.
With a, up to, up to...
I just made that motion. I just made that motion to get a computer, work with John and get a computer that's suitable to take all the programs he'll need to fly and up to a thousand dollars. Somebody want to second that motion? God, we'll... Any more discussion about getting a new computer with the VA office up to a thousand? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Is any more questions about the zoning administrators' report? Planning Commission?
Okay, so, we had our first of three public sessions for the Community Values Mapping Project. It was held last Tuesday, led by Monica, just the heart of Vermont Fish and Wildlife. A follow-up session will be held on October sixteenth, next Wednesday, and it'll start at seven o'clock at the same place, Metairie Community School. And a final review and a court submission will be held on Thursday, November fourteenth. First session was attended by thirteen members of the whole community, including four members of the planning commission. I would like to have a little bit more showing from the community. I've left some files at the signing table there, so if you take them, hand them out to friends, I'd like to get as many people as we can. Next session, next Wednesday, we're going to also invite children. People can bring their children with them that are concerned about leaving their home. We're gonna get children to practice today. The next item was open positions and George, the chair of defense, Rosenthal overs. The first one on my list. The only other thing, Mike, with Jonas is I think you made an offer as part of the salary.
Yes. The current...
We'll assume that it's coming back.
The same rate that we were paying Hal.
Also, Harry Van Meter contacted the only applicant who responded to the court secretary position for the planning commission. Her name is Tammy Ross, she's of Middletown Springs, and I interviewed her on October fourth and I found her at Fall Fuzz. She's currently working at the office of Woldington, Campbell, Spence and Stetson. That sounds familiar. In Manchester at the Paralegal. In addition to other work in the legal field, she's also had considerable experience in office administration as well as work with the downtown running partnership, which she was responsible for coordinating street state activities in the downtown district. So, the planning commission respectfully requests that the select board pass the resolution to hire Tammy for sole position with, position of community.
What do you think the board feel about that?
Is this a conflict of interest being that she works for the attorney?
She's secretary of the planning commission, I would...
I think she's just taking notes, so I really can't see that. And she's only, I mean, only, but she's a paralegal, which...
And she's not working with the development review board and the...
Not making any decisions.
The planning commission doesn't make any decisions, the DRD makes the decisions. So, I think that it would be, I think there's enough space there to make it very fun drive, in my opinion.
Looks like she hires the state administration in the state planning, which is a different department than what Merrill works in. From what I've gathered.
Yeah, the next paper you have is stuck at her resume.
Yeah, I've already, I've already done one.
I didn't, I didn't add on her resume that she also worked with Ed on this campaign.
Yes. Bob make a motion?
I qualified, Carrie, very efficient.
Bob make a motion? Do you want to second that?
I'll second it, yeah.
Any more discussions? All in favor? Carrie? Opposed? Carrie?
Can I just ask what we can offer in how we...
They don't remember what the rate was. They would have...
I don't know that we've had it, but we've set up for it.
They would never rate. I don't know, we'll have to... Does anybody have any ideas? We usually try and keep that a little bit more confidential.
Yeah. Should we check with Julian, one?
I think so, that's probably right.
You can have a stab with a stab with rate, too, if you're...
Okay.
Thank you. Also, the last item is the municipal planning grant. An application has been submitted to the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development for a municipal planning grant to fund the cost of a consultant to help the planning commission develop an economic development plan for the town. The request to fund the project was in the amount of eighty-seven hundred dollars from the state of Vermont. And I've left a copy of the budget for you. The total cost of the project is estimated at ninety-six hundred dollars with nine hundred dollars being matching funds from the town. So, the planning commission respectfully requests the select board pass a resolution to add a line item to the ballot for the town vote in the amount of ninety dollars. Cover the matching fund.
Is that something that we have to vote on right now to...
No.
We don't.
No, not...
We don't even have, we don't have that already in, in planning, in any, any money that the planning commission can do, does it do, or not? I, planning commission doesn't have any budget for any kind of... Only with, the only other type, when we hire...
It really doesn't have to be made tonight. Other than it's a condition of us getting money after we're awarded. But then again, and maybe on second thought, it's a better idea not to vote on it tonight because it's only ten percent of what we're, what we're given.
What we're awarded?
Yeah, so, we don't know what the award's gonna be.
Okay.
We've asked for ninety-six hundred dollars, but we don't know what...
Right, they may not give it all to you, okay.
Okay.
It seems like a good thing. I don't see, I think that's a great way to handle that, a very inexpensive way to get that much work done.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Carrie? We have been discussing before. Oh, road forms before. Good evening, Keith.
Ready?
Ready.
Oh, it's just ongoing what we've been doing, pretty old job on the west side. I'm back down to here, it's all, it started with Paul Brady, got Applewood and Stan, um... A little couple of more, there's no need. And, uh, did a repair on the storm drain, what Paul Julie's been talking about, all coming out there. Much better than that.
Definitely looks a lot better.
Couple of lot of roads we've got, so, I guess we'll look, other than that, I don't...
What about evaluating the property in there outside of mine, if you have a little building next to it? Katrina, do you know Katrina?
I, yeah, I know Katrina, I think it's popular, last year, I think they were talking about that issue. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be tough. It's actually going on at the side block, prior to where we were supposed to pull that firm, what I'm... And, you know, it also comes from the big puddle at the end of the rail trail. And all of that, and, you know, their property as well. There's a lot of issues, because, you know, I don't know exactly how much to count as property.
Could we, would the people that name the rail trail have any?
I can check with them. They, do you know where the, anything the rail trail is, where they're laying, where they're...
Um, I don't really feel that. I know that I'm not the only one having problems with it. And I'm not, but it's usually a problem. It's more like a sort of, sort of, it's...
And all the rest, yeah.
Well, I know our basement draws right over here.
Well, no, I don't really know, so...
Well, I have a, I have a wall, it's trapped, I put it out there, and it's just all over there, so you just go like, first to the guy.
When they go there now, the heat runs off the roof and runs in the window. They were doing that the other day when I was there. You know, obviously, that's something that they can do without themselves. I mean, we can throw something out the street, but what we do is not going to heal, we, uh, maybe help it, but it's not going to...
Well, I mean, I, I've seen a video of the water running down the street and there's people, people coming up over there. Even spaces like that, like, um, it's like a bowl, instead of running down the drain, so it's all started with the...
Is it coming from the rail trail section?
Oh, it does, yeah. I mean, I, the thing is, is we like, the, the side of the building, the thing that the canyon in my building has walked out and, and for me, there's been, there's, there's, it could be on the north side, that's like flat. And now there's like, we've got where the water runs down there.
It's all to the back corner of the fishing angle and the closest to the bridge, it's called the ditch because it's just on the backside of her foundation. her foundation, used to expose the daylight, and now, in that culvert, there's a bunch of roofing material, and shingles, and stuff, that is jammed out, and it's not letting, one that goes in, to the back of your building, is trapped in, and it can't get out, too quickly, so it needs to go out.
And that's, that drainage is just kinda there, it's not an approved drainage that the town has any record of, or anything like that, it's just kinda, it's something between those two buildings, historically.
I believe it was put in, it's been there longer than my back for the town, it's pretty obvious it's been there, so, it was there then, and I can tell you a little bit of history, because they put that drain across there, and then, as you guys have all, they bought the burden for the fishing game building, and it's all ran into the fishing game station, so that's when they put that pipe that goes down through between the two buildings, to carry it beyond the fishing game building, and then it's caused the river. That, uh, you know, there could be a swale that opens up there, and where that pipe is exposed, and it was lower than near that door, so that water, if it did get in there, because it comes off the eaves, it comes off the street, and it comes off, if you look in the left-hand side of the, right in the rail trail, the drain will always be, there's a puddle that's always there, and I'm sure in the winter, when we put all that snow in there, you know, all of that goes that way as well, it runs down your building from there, it was doing it the other day, when I was over there, so, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors that is contributing to the problem, and they're not all the talent, to the point that.
What's the roof design on the fishing game keep, is it about a flat roof?
It's pretty flat, I don't think the eaves dump in there, probably dump off of that, and they don't, you know, it's just, it's the eaves that come right off our buildings, and when there's two basement windows on each side, that have plywood on them, and then there's dirt filled up against that, and, get the swale down through there, and we keep it lower than the building, when I was over there the other day, running in the window, off your eaves, so, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's ongoing.
There's many issues that make it, make the effect.
And we can do something, probably, on the street side, that I, I can, it's gonna help, but it's not gonna resolve the issue.
Oh, well, who would be responsible for this ditch that's parked, to clean it out?
It's probably off your property, and it's on, that's the pile of debris that's all over the top of the pipe there, and it's just, well, there could be a surface drainage from your back door, and the base, through the river, and it wasn't filled with, looked like shingles, and plywood, and siding, and it's just.
Do you mean like behind the, the, the?
Yeah, very behind, there's some pile there, on top of that, probably, after that, uh.
Longs Angelo Miller, the fishing game building, Longs Angelo Miller, you know.
And if there's construction debris, uh, debris and all that, I would think she'd be responsible for cleaning it all.
And I'm glad we made it, you're, I'm sure, we're all, but, but, there's no question that junk comes off the tree, so, I feel, that's that, I feel, say that it's not gonna completely go away.
Yeah, and, so, what I've watched happen, is, is, I mean, there's, like, a large pool of, like, kind of, where it's, like, a block out, and then, comes down to our alley, and just walk, and, and I don't think what's going on, or anything, ever happened before, is we needed to wash out, like, the back corner there, or, 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 that, but, I don't see that, like.
The living, so, they're on the tree, that's.
Yeah, and I can show you, but, where, with, kind of, it's, like, a, a.
Break this piece here? Yeah, the pipe that was along between the buildings, and the fishing game over there, and probably the building, to the base, that's, that's, and it's, 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 it's so far enough, and it's, it's, there, those sediments that came down, and got put out, pipe in the building, and, 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 just let the vermin, and it, that's what caused the water to back, and it's, um, it's, 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 and, uh, but maybe possible, to, to, to go straight down, like, where the pipe goes underneath the road there, and tap into the drain, you know, the water, we have two, two different locations, on this side of the road, and that side of the road, which actually use that same pipe to go, the whole thing is going through the rest of the, of the.
That, that whole pipe.
We can tell you that, based on what we did, yeah, the last week, we got, I mean, we just helped keep.
What are, what's the function of the grates that are at the end of the rail trail in both directions?
Those aren't grates, those were, put in for blind people, so they can tell when they hit the street, before they cross, they're not grates, they're steel plates with bolts on them.
Sensory.
Part of the ADA program, and they were put in at every cross, and they'll leave the, 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 so, that's not that, that was part of the.
Forest of War.
That's what we control, the rail trail, so.
I wasn't sure what they were.
Yeah, they're down at the Sonno Road, they're down at Rupert, they're up all the way down through, and all the way to Catholic, everywhere, it's obvious.
Okay, so you'll meet again with her, and try and figure out how we can alleviate some of these issues from that storm drain and stuff, too, and come up with our best options.
That storm drain works, it's gonna help a little bit, but, so.
And, but that ditch that goes out through with something that's on personal property, that's not a town maintained?
I don't even know that we have a right of access to that, you know, some of those down through there, we do, we do have one there, I don't, I don't, I'm not aware.
You're not aware of that?
Without doing a title search, and looking through the land records, whether we even have a, even a, to access to it, we have one at Greg Rowland's, or we have one at the post office through there, but I, I'm not, I'm not aware if we have one between, are you there, is there an easement on your east?
I, I have, I, I don't.
So, that's, we either need to, well, going to work there, we either need to obtain one, or do something to it.
We have to have a written easement from the landowner, or, or find a existing one that would be in, in the own, in the pile of the property, that it would be able to answer.
But I kinda feel like Edgar, that, uh, that building rubble.
It certainly contributed to the problem, particularly.
Chris Ganim owner, and said, hey, you need to clean this up.
It's way behind your house, you gotta make the fire build up, so it goes in your basement.
Where her problem.
Okay, so you'll continue this, or?
Wouldn't that be the property owner's responsibility, allow that, when it changed from the West Pollard Fish and Game Club, there were a lot of problems with that building at, at the time, and with the foundation and everything, and with water problems in the basement, and that was sold, because the fishing games had lost their nonprofit status, you know, they were no longer tax exempt, and so, I know, when, because there was a member of the fishing game club, when, uh, Jay and I, and a lot of people were going in to try to help clean it up, it was, it was a mess, and I have no idea how it was left, but I suspect, and it was purchased as is, uh, I would suspect that a lot of that debris came from inside that place.
And that would be the property owner's, okay, that if the club got ditched there, then they would be responsible for maintaining that. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? Okay, thank you. The assessors report. Errors and omissions received, uh, would be, PCTR twenty nineteen dash oh nine on September eighteenth, that was recorded in the clerk's office, the closing date was February twelfth, and it should have included the twenty nineteen grant list, but the information was available, unavailable to us, net tax parcels, one fifty-three thirty-four oh six, and one fifty-three thirty-three oh seven.
I have a, I didn't first sign it on that.
Annual Vermont Assessors and Listers Association Conference this year concentrated on mapping, and we brought home valuable information regarding options for our DIS mapping updates, we continue to work with Cartographic Associates on our mapping corrections and updates, it is important that taxpayers and visitors to West Pollard DIS website understand that mapping updates currently correspond with the grant list filings in Americanas of April one of that given year, our current used parcels are hundred percent certified, pending any additions by the state before the end of one year, assessors' hours, the office is closed on the seventh, and will be closed on the fourteenth, please to schedule office hours for October, Monday, the twenty-first, Karen will be in the office on the twenty-eighth, and as necessary, to keep work current. So, errors and omissions.
Looks that way. Doesn't say who, who would like to sign it, but.
Okay, the, Tom Clerk, the elevator will be inspected soon, and we recently informed that the light is out in the elevator machine room, is that like, do you know what kind of light that is, is the light?
Which one?
In the. Elevator machine room, is that just a light bulb?
Oh, it must be downstairs.
I haven't heard anything about it till now.
I think that's just a bulb.
Just a light bulb in the room.
If I'm remembering.
I'll check on it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the room that says, do not enter?
Have somebody stand there.
That's why we don't know what kind of a light it is.
I guess it's safe, but soon I would begin to know. Oh, really? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, monthly report errors and omissions from the assessors, uh, per Bob, per request of Bob Marlinho, letter from Jim Sheldon, would request us for the Board of Health hearing, and the office will be closed on the fourteenth, have a good evening. Count Pecker's memo, four warrants to be signed, does everybody look at the warrant?
Yep.
Oh, wait, you're a little short, that needs.
It's the fourteenth of October, of federal.
Yeah.
Okay. Seems like there's an awful lot of federal hallways that are closed here, and people might have the opportunity to. That's just not, okay.
Does someone have a motion to approve the warrant? Is that a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Forty-four tax, thirteen payroll, thirty-one account, so, that's a very nice meeting with Mark Johnson from our cap, and I've been corresponding with him since then, he has sent a file that I can use to play the figures, as we move forward with the asset management plan, in order to best serve the wastewater plant, I've only received a few claims about the, complaints about the new wastewater rate, and that, please sign the budget status report for your review, and her office will be closed on Monday, the fourth.
Okay, I also have, um, the last meeting, that item that was signed, I think, just to, I think it was about the bank, like, authorizing Julie, there was one missed section that needed your signature.
Mary, you're the team management director, Bob?
Uh, I'm in the course.
I do.
Yeah, you have to, yeah.
Yes, do you want me to? Um, okay, so, R. Marlinho and Jay Lukey attended the Vermont Emergency Preparedness Conference on September sixth and seventh, R. Marlinho received the Vermont Emergency Management Director of the Year Award.
Congratulations, well deserved.
R. Marlinho took part in a CAT four exercise call on September tenth, R. Marlinho took part in the Vermont State THIRA Conference, T H I R A, in Killington on September eleventh through thirteenth, this conference EMA money will be allocated in the state, he attended a CAT four meeting in Pollard with Fire Chiefs Weiss and Ricard, and also Keith Mason and Jay Lukey, to discuss Pollard's participation in the CAT four exercise on October twenty-third. And, health officers report, follow-up inspection.
Vote, carry.
I will send her an email.
Obviously the steps at the library is set until spring, right? Do we want to go ahead with the addition to the back, the lift, do we put that on the ballot and mark for the, for the side?
John?
I think the library board is working on a proposal for that.
I written, oh yes.
And I, they reached out to me as a liaison and I said, let's get the steps, the consensus for that and then come, come to us at budget time in November, December for the addition, or for the renovation with it having to be done by the time the ballots have gone through.
To work up a proposal to put on the ballot. Okay, that makes, if that's done, I think. Does that answer your question John, or do you have more?
No, 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 thanks, go.
Okay. Any more older unfinished business? Go ahead.
Did we, did we hear any more attorney?
In regard of...
Well, we had a gentleman here earlier that laughed.
As far as I know, he has applied for, can you read that?
Yes.
What did she tell us?
I was finishing my one.
As far as the weight per ham case is the one you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I was just finishing my one.
So I'm just talking, that's the one you're, you're referencing, right?
Right. Karen, will you share?
Um.
We'll let her read it and then you can weigh in on it, please.
So Merrill wrote to us, there's been a lo, it's been a long stream, but in essence that currently regarding the weight per ham matter, the matter is currently out of the select board's hands. There is a notice of violation filed, which is the town taking action and it was followed by an appeal. Now the D R V needs to hold a hearing and hear the appeal. Then depending on what they decide, one or the other party may need to appeal to the environmental court at that point. It may just be that the parties duke it out in court and the town can hold their coats. In other words, monitor the proceeding without active participation and let the court decide. And in a later email, she had reiterated that at this point in time, the entire matter is out of the select board's purview and is being handled appropriately through the legal parties as well as them going to the D R V.
Okay, Keith?
We're looking at a D R V here and we're trying to get the schedule to go on for the year.
Okay.
Depending on their doing.
Okay.
And then down there, Merrill will probably take a moment, she can, so they're ready in a way that can be presented if it's over to the P.
Okay.
They feel ready and legally turn around and then have a terrible over present if somebody's going to do it, you know, give the word straight back. There'll be a penal hearing, always, and it's never moving, starting around the off due to the procedure, of course. So the recommendation that I've got is to start all over because it's a first act of a procedural issue. And I'm saying that we did it wrong the first time, part of the court was not ruled on it because they sent it back because of the top of the procedure of, we started scaling again where they psyched us and all, spoiled us and do our own thing and then come here for it, for it.
That's why it circles out around again because there was procedural issues and that's, that's what she answered me too, the same way. I said, isn't this just what we went through? And she said, do the procedural issues when the first, way back when, the first, what was?
Several issues, one with the zoning administration, one with the problem not arising until after the appeal process was permitted, the grant was already passed, you know, these are all things that were, could have been addressed prior to what we did before.
What's the date?
We don't have a date yet. We're shooting for the first week of November, probably going to certainly not see anywhere else. Halloween the week before, that misses things off, we just, so I think it's, I'm not going to give you a date until here, that's what I remember. We've got the remainder of this week to get it more, you know, it's got to be more in the first part of next week, we have the fourteen day prior to that, so it'll be more in the short term.
Michelle, your turn.
Could you please send update please on the five forty-one bar handle by me?
Well, it seems that he's very reluctant to allow himself to get served.
Yes.
So, the state, the sheriff, this was the last report I got from Merrill, I'll just paraphrase it, and she said that the sheriff's have tried several times and been met with quite a lot of resistance and he's not been truthful with saying when he was going to be there and when he was not. She's, I, I don't know the exact, but she's talking to the court so she can serve him electronically because it's not working to keep everything going in a forward motion and she expected to be able to do that maybe even earlier Friday, get a ruling so she could, she was legal to electronically serve him.
Okay, so the sheriff's has brought a couple back?
Yes.
No results, publication repress, September thirteenth, no results, so she's not in court yet.
Well, she has, now she has, because they can't serve him, because they won't allow him to serve him, she has to electronically serve him to keep the process moving forward.
Okay.
So that's what she's trying to, to get permission to do.
Okay.
So she said that she may, she was hoping to have, have had that by the end of last week, but I haven't heard anything from her since, but that's the direction, that's our next step.
Okay.
Electronically serve him because he's...
In that way.
Right.
How, what's the chances for inspection and what are the expectations?
Nothing can happen till we can get on there and look and that's what this, has to open it up.
Okay.
So as soon as, as soon as the state steps in or whatever agency steps in and we get enough power, then, then everybody gets to go on and then they get to, you know, the assessors get to assess his property correctly and the zoning administrator can see what, what he has permits for and what he doesn't have permits for.
Do you expect something in the next two weeks?
I, I don't know, I can't tell you that, but I know that she is actively working on it and, and it seems like she's quite frustrated, so she's not going to lay down, you know, she's, she's like, I've had enough of him and I'm going to stay aggressive to...
She's pretty tired of it.
Would you say that was a pretty good?
Yeah, well, each one of these steps, there's a timeframe that is required before you can take the next step, so it's not like you could try to serve him one day and then serve him less, less time, the next step, several times and then places the next step and then the next step, I think, in court orders, we'll get that, how to do that, I think it's kind of all.
Process.
Does he have to be served in Vermont State or can he be served in New York State where he is going on file for threatening the lives of people down Case College? Is his court case coming up?
I, I really don't know that, but she's well aware of all that activity going on too, so she's, if there's some possibility of using that to her favor, I'm sure she will stay cool with the end of that.
Amazing, okay, thank you.
New business.
Mine?
Oh.
I should have brought up, I didn't know where during the treasury report, but I represented the town at the tax sale.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd been asked to and there was only one property that went up for tax sale of the five, I think, that were publicized and the one that did was the Hersum property on one fifty-three and the town did agree to bid on that.
Okay.
What was the cost, so they'll have a year, people familiar with the owners expect them to pay, but they have a year to do something.
They have a year to complete that, okay, otherwise we just get only like the last one.
Yeah, I thought you were going to, thanks for, thanks for helping. Okay, excellent, so we, that one's on off now, but it, it...
We have nothing.
Pushes them into a corner, so it's either a year, they, they have a year, because if no one bids, then, then it can just keep going and going.
Keep going.
So we bid it and then it, then it...
Present was, the Duncan Tax Collector, Kim Ayers was there, Kevin O'Toole, the lawyer was there and me and, well, Mark McChesney was there, I don't know whether he was walking by.
Yeah.
He did not bid on it.
All right, well, thank you. New business.
Laura?
Well, one, I'll start with a question. Under the laws of the state of Vermont, is the town responsible for providing transportation to infill schools? It did not used to be. That was at the discretion of the town. So that is a question that should be asked, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to research that. I have an article here for you in regard to the carbon tax details that has been proposed and may come down to as nothing but a magic wand saying you're going to do this. There's a schedule in this article saying when things will happen. I thought you might want to be aware because it could impact the budget adversely.
Thank you.
I need my, I need my, I need my, lovely, I've got more business.
Thank you, bud.
I do very much, I do.
Business.
That's what.
You have any?
Well, the letter from Beth.
Oh, right, right.
So I forwarded, forwarded it to you all and I think it would be, should read it.
But I didn't get a chance to read it.
But in essence, there was a follow-up email, what she's trying to say is about moving history, in regard, it's in regards to the movement of the monument, inquiring as to why move the history when it's already been made in that current state and is raising the question as to whether or not, is the fact that the monument was erected in that space part of the history of the monument? So if you could all take some time to review.
Could you put that letter and close it with tonight's minute? Sure. That, that's a letter from Beth Duquette in regard to the monument at the little, in North Pollitt, correct? So she's written the letter, we just got it, so we're not going to act on it tonight because I, most of us haven't had a chance to read it yet, but some of us haven't, so we'll put it in with the, the minutes of this meeting so that everybody can read it and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
That's the one that's going to North Pollitt?
Yeah.
That's the one that's going to get rolled through?
Yes. This is her letter in regard to that, not in a, that's her, to give us a chance, but I, I need it.
It's lengthy.
It's quite lengthy, so we'll, we'll, we'll put it out there so everybody can read it and we'll discuss it at the next meeting so we can, we can have a little bit of time to. Laura?
I just wanted to say that I do not agree with me, the monument, because we need a lot of something, I could buy to do it, I can remember one school closed, I can, you know, some of the history is over in the library, there's pictures of people who attended in North Pollitt School and teaching, putting people from our family and I think it's the same with our, our little school in West Pollitt, you know, our major school that was started out as an academy, has been sold and I think it's too bad to change little pockets of history that are easily maintained, it's the building that takes more maintenance than the actual monument. Thank you.
I did.
this. There's a schedule in this article saying when things will happen. I thought you might want to be aware, because it could impact the budget adversely.
I've got new business.
Thank you, Beth.
I think I want to join in on this as well.
You have any?
Well, the letter from Beth.
Oh, right.
So I forwarded, forwarded it to you all, and I think it would be... Should read it.
I didn't get a chance to read it.
But in essence, there's a follow-up email. What she was trying to say is about moving history, it's in regards to the movement of the monument, inquiring as to why move the history when it's already been made in that current state, and is raising the question as to whether or not, is the fact that the monument was erected in that space part of the history of the monument? So if you could all take some time to review.
Could you put that letter and close it with tonight's minutes?
Sure.
That's a letter from Beth Duquette in regard to the monument at the little, in North Pollitt, perhaps? So she's written the letter, we just got it, so we're not going to act on it tonight, because most of us haven't had a chance to read it yet, but some of us haven't. So we'll put it in with the minutes of this meeting, so that everybody can read it, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Is this worth, that's the one at the North Pollitt school?
Yeah.
That's the one that's going to...
It's her letter in regards to that, not in a, so I figured it'll give us a chance, but I didn't read it. Beth? It's quite lengthy, it's quite lengthy, so we'll put it out there so everybody can read it, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting, so that we can, we can have a little bit of time. Doris?
I just wanted to say that I do not agree with me, although, to my monument, because we need the water from the, I could buy the earth, I can remember one school closed, I can, you know, some of the history is over in the library, the pictures of people who are tenants in North Pollitt School, including people from our family. And I think it's the same with our little school in West Pollitt. You know, our major school, that was started out as an academy, has been sold. And I think it's too bad to change little pockets of history that are easily maintained. It's the building that takes more maintenance than the actual monument. Thank you.
I did read Beth's letter, and she had some very valid points.
Is there any other new business?
Nothing.
Public comment. We have some public comments tonight. Doris?
I think Julie actually doing a great job.
Good.
Really doing a great job.
That's good to know, Keith. Feel the same way? Frank?
Through some animal control issues in the town of North East Kingdom, that lot that's been over, about the birds that are moved, maybe addressing legislation, get a bunch of towns gathering better, closing blankets, getting better. It's in FYI. Farmers might want to watch it.
Thank you. Well, if there's no more public comment, we'll adjourn this meeting. So we have another one back to back.
No, I know.
Okay. Your motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you all for coming.